Good evening. I'd like to call into session tonight's meeting of the Caddybunk Planning Board. Today is Monday, September 11, 2023. First item on our agenda is an updated sketch plan for subdivision revision at 6 Oliver Lane. Brittany Howard, Town Planner, would you please introduce this project to us?
Yep, this is 6 Oliver Lane, map 38, lot 35. Robin McSorley from Sebago Technics is here representing the property owner. The applicant is proposing two lots on 99,312 square feet. It's in the Village Residential and Shoreland Overlay zoning districts. It's currently a vacant parcel. Oliver Lane was before the board in 2017 as amendment to long view terrace. They basically created the two lots in front of this parcel back then. The board reviewed a previous sketch plan for this application in May of this year and held a site walk on June 3. The applicant has updated the emergency vehicle turnaround. See, there's a memo from the fire department in the packet that was provided to the planning board. Also, there was a memo from Conservation Commission that the applicant did address in their submittal. The next step for this applicant would be submit a plan for subdivision review unless the board decided they wanted to do another site walk out there, depending on what's presented this evening.
Thank you for the applicant. You're on. There you go.
Good evening. Rob McSorley with Sebago Technics, representing Mr. Barbara Lee and his wife relative to the project here on 6 Oliver Lane. As Brittany had said, we did do a site walk with you all out there in June. With that, we had also worked out with the fire chief an appropriate turnaround for fire or emergency vehicles that came into the site, and you can see that on this plan. Also on this plan, we tweaked the lot slightly around by rotating the building and whatnot, but mainly it's the same configuration overall that we had presented before. The one big difference, of course, the plan that you saw before had suggested possibly a bed and breakfast on the more northerly lot. That is not considered at this time. You'll see that the frontage of that, there were some parking areas that were put in front of that, that has been changed and deleted. So that would only be a single family house going forward. There were two comments from the Conservation Commission. One asked whether a wetland review had been done on this property, and the question, the answer to that is yes. Albert Frick and Associates did a wetland review and review of the location of the streams on site, and that was what was used to reflect the setbacks you see on the plan before you. Also, there was a question relative to whether there was sanitary or sewer available for this project, and the answer to that is unfortunately, no. The closest sewer is on the other side of Maryfield. It kind of splits the lots that are between Maryfield and I can't remember what the street on the other side of it is, but it's quite a ways away. All the houses along this location here do not tie in to that sewer and whatnot. So with that, we would like to open up for you to ask us any more questions on it, and look forward to moving forward with you on this.
All right. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, just a couple of questions. Trying to remember from our site walk what that topography is. So going across lot A to lot B, I thought there was going to be a downward slope to the property, to the driveway in lot B?
The, that will be all about the same elevation. The way the house will be situated, though, it will have a walkout on the south side of it. So it has a, uses the topography change that's there to be able to provide for that.
So I guess the point of the question was that with the turnaround between the two parcels and then this T component down here, is there a, what is the slope of that? Do you know?
We haven't designed that. Will be part of the next part of the site plan process. We have looked at it a little bit because one of the things going back out of the site walk, I wanted to make sure that elevation wise, we can make the walkout basement work with the topography and still have the grading and whatnot. So we know that that can work. Of course, the turnaround will be elevated and then coming off that, we'll have a slope coming down. I can't imagine it'd be more than one on three. You know, probably shallower than that.
Just concerned relative to Fire Chief's questions or concerns around not being paved versus the pavers in his comments.
And we'll work that out with the Fire Chief. We're in total agreement about the turnaround, and we'll discuss the surface to make sure he's okay with it.
The only other question I had was more so just the proposed leach field relative to the driveway and that turnaround on lot B, and just the proximity of that, and if there's any risk of damage or any other being so close in this leach field on lot B. Is it typical to be that close to a driveway or anything else?
You can actually be under the driveway. You know, you could use a concrete chamber system and be under it. There's a lot of times when we do that. So, yeah.
That's all I had.
Thanks, Dan. Janice.
My question's also about the grading, I believe, and I forget where we left off, so I apologize, but I think we had talked about some sort of a grading plan in an earlier discussion because I wanted to ensure that the grading would not put siltation or other things into the wetlands that are on that second parcel. So, you know, are you prepared to discuss that tonight, or is that something that you still have, are working on?
The final details on the grading will be as part of the next package. We will go ahead and not have excessive slopes over the site and anything over like when the one to three slope, if we're putting, we will have some type of stabilization mat that we'll put down in addition to the greenery and whatnot. The whole thing is that the buffer that's being retained, that helps to take care of the water quality and whatnot before it hits the stream and whatnot. Will be stabilized all the way in the back to that point of the buffer. So, you know, there should not be any problem with siltation or major salt runoff from this project.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Thanks, Chris. Dan hit on two of my questions. One I have is in terms of the chief's comment about the fire turnaround, and just looking at the graphic on here, I know, have you selected what type of product you're looking for for that stabilization?
We have, but I want to discuss it with the Fire Chief. I want to make sure he's happy with what we do. I have used several different products. I have a product at a assisted living facility that I did, big grass, open courtyard. You know, we want to keep the grass because of the environmental nature and of all our projects these days. And there's a system where you build a stabilization bed underneath, and then there's a web system that you fill in, and then you loom over the top of it. It gives you the stabilization that you can drive a fire truck on. And in fact, I downloaded the literature. I was going to send it to the Fire Chief, but I wanted to wait and have that discussion with him. But whatever he wants in the end, we will put what he wants in.
Well, I know he's familiar with the, what I, the plastic grid system.
Yeah.
His biggest concern is just making sure the gravel base underneath that will support fire equipment.
Oh, yeah. Like I said, we've used it before.
Okay. And then the other comment I have is on lot A, the proposed septic location crosses the 25-foot setback.
It will, it will be corrected. It can be moved over.
If you want to go to the, you got to go to the.
You need to go to the mic.
I just realized, I just realized what you saw. Yeah, I don't think that was, that septic system is also for a house that's not going to be built now, so we can be, make it smaller.
As long as it's out of the setback.
Slide it out of the setback.
When, and when we do the more detailed plan for lot B, we're going to coordinate with the gentleman who did the preliminary design, and we will tie that down a little better. Ours is actually oversized also, so it's probably going to shrink a little bit.
Okay. That was really the only two points I had.
Thanks, Bob. Richard.
What I, what I was concerned about has been already talked about, but I am concerned that we make 100% sure that the gravel base for the turnaround is going to be confirmed by an engineer, that it, that it will be able to handle the weight of a fire, the heaviest apparatus that the fire department has. So when it's designed, it needs to be confirmed that it will, will handle that. And the other concern is, the concern that I always have with any work that's done in this area, which is, there's an awful lot of water in the, in the ground there, and we want to make sure that whatever's done, the water doesn't travel, traverse to the neighbors and that it's, everything's done appropriately so that the engineering is done so that you don't increase the, the water flow to, to the neighbors. So.
Relative to your first item, I've had to do several analyses. For many of the local towns around here, use the same combination fire truck, ladder truck for emergency purposes. I've had to do it and show in several communities, even without putting a pavement layer on, basically based upon your base and your base rock, that it's adequate for the, what you have for the fire trucks and whatnot. So I will be handling that. And the other item relative to runoff, there will be no direct runoff to anybody else's property based upon the nature of this. It'll go into the areas on the lots and flow through the buffer areas and then go to the wetland slash stream area. So there won't be any direct runoff to another lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Ted?
Thank you. I'm comfortable with the, your responses to my colleagues' questions, which were, many of which were mine. I'm, just to show on the map, when we were out there, there was a lot of new landfill coming in, if I recall that. And I'm wondering where that is on the map. I, yeah. Oh, it was up there. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was like, you got a fancy pen.
No, it's me. Don't care. Be happy.
Yeah, okay. So that, that helps me considerably in, in dealing with my thoughts about the lot B. So my questions are answered. Thank you very much.
You'll still be bringing in a lot of fill. There was more fill than, than we saw there, right? Obviously to create the driveway to keep, you know, at the top level of that house. It's all going to be relatively at the same level, right? So you're putting in a lot. Yeah.
There'll be a little bit more fill over towards the, the new, the residence on the lot B.
Yep.
Once again, probably not as much needed because you're going to have the basement area.
Right.
And then we're going to have the walkout on the backside, but there is a little bit more.
Before the driveway and the turnaround, that's all, you're going to need a bunch of fill for that. Yep.
Correct.
So that's going to be relatively leveling for the
Yep.
leach bed and stuff. So there'll be a bunch, Ted, to answer your question, there'll be more fill than we saw there, a bunch more coming in. So, I mean, I still have concerns about this whole turnaround, the way it looks and is configured. I mean, I like this approach better, that it's not all, that it's not all paved, because it just, I don't know how you manage parking in that type of situation. This looks a little more designed and controlled, where people know where to park and kind of where not to park. I am concerned how you keep clear the grass paved areas of snow and stuff in the winter without tearing up the grass and, or do you just replant it every year? I guess is the question. So those are my concerns, and I guess my one question about the grass.
The two things you brought, one is kind of the reason why we've gone to the differentiation for the materials is so that people don't feel that they can park there. I have a project in South Portland. It's a, the end of the road is a turnaround. And I had a meeting with the city out there two weeks ago, and the neighbors thought it was their private driveway. So, you know, that was kind of the thought on, on that. Relative to, there is some disturbance that happens when you have type installation like this. We could go for a, a straight paver, which is, you know, paver surface.
Yeah.
But, you know, environmentally, the, the open, you know, you can do the open block or you can do the web that you don't even see. So there's going to be, every year, there's going to be some smoothing out and reseating.
Yeah.
And the applicant knows that.
For your leach bed, I mean, I know you can do the Elgin, the, the concrete, that, what, what are you proposing to use? Do you know that yet? Are you doing stone and pipe? Or are you going to use the?
Not sure yet.
Okay.
Yep. You know, I'm not sure if we'll use Elgin chambers. Both of those get you a 50% reduction on the, the area and whatnot. This shouldn't need any pretreatment. It's a street residential project. So, you know, once again, that is oversized based upon what, so it, footprint should get smaller, but I'm not sure what the, the site evaluator will use yet.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I too will be interested in seeing the grading plan, and we'll look that over with some interest for sure because of how, you know, how much fill you have to that corner of the house where the leach bed is and the end of that turnaround is, and then you're going to drop off, I guess, pretty much to get to a walkout basement. So I don't know if you're doing retaining walls there or what, but it looks like it'll probably be a pretty, pretty good drop off there. So.
Yep.
I look forward to seeing that detail. And obviously interested in hearing the chief's comments on whatever you do, decide for the, for the material on that. But it still gives me some concerns, that turnaround. Yes, Bob?
One thing I missed, as Chris was talking, I was looking at the turnaround. The grading that's going to occur on the, you know, if they're on the westerly side of the drive coming in, your grading's going to encroach on that 25-foot setback.
Bottom edge of the driveway?
Yep, Brittany.
Yep, there.
We're going to have to be looking at how you can keep that tight, and it wouldn't be the first time we've had an applicant request a waiver, a reduction in that buffer, but that has to be looked at closely.
Definitely addressed that.
And the chief's already looked at and signed off on the geometry of the drive coming in? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we did our fancy little modeling where we
Yep.
have the fire truck we can actually drive and.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? I don't think we need to see another site walk. It's essentially the same layout unless board members have any other thoughts, but I think we can, we don't need to do that. So I think we'll just, yeah, yeah. So I think, I think we've seen enough, and you've got your homework to do. And so I think we're more comfortable, I think, with this iteration. So it's cleaner. We know it's not a bed and breakfast on the first lot, and that parking's been erased, and you've kind of addressed some of the other concerns. So we look forward to seeing more detail.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
You have a good evening.
You too.
I did not get a copy of the revised agenda, but I know the next agenda item, our initial agenda, original agenda was contract zone supplemental cemental from the wedding cake house. Brittany, do you want to discuss your communication with the applicant?
Yep. The attorney was under the weather this evening, so asked to have it be tabled to the next meeting. And because I don't want to also be under the weather after interacting, I suggested that would be a great idea. So it'll be tabled to the meeting on the 25th.
Okay.
Do we have room on that agenda?
We do.
Okay.
Plenty of room.
It'll be Caddybunk Savings, resumetal, and Wedding Cake House again. Yeah.
Yep.
But that's not public hearing. It's just resumetal for this board, so it shouldn't be as lengthy as the last time they were both on the same agenda. We were trying to avoid having them on the same agenda, but if they're looking to get to that March election, it doesn't really work timeline wise because we don't have that meeting in October. So.
And I will not be here that night. That's our wedding anniversary, and I will not be.
Oh, you don't want to spend your wedding anniversary with us?
Years? I have done that. I have been here for birthdays. I always chair. When Chris was so gracious to agree to take over his chair, those things.
I guess if you have any comments, if you want to submit them, we can
I will.
share them with the board. So at the meeting.
What year is your anniversary?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Wow. Congratulations. I'm going to mention this now because hopefully they can address it before, and I mentioned it to you before, Brittany. But I'd like to see some language in the contract zone that talks about maintaining or, maintaining the architectural integrity of the appearance of, of the building. That's part of the agreement, and if they can't keep up the physical, the character of the building, then, then they're breach of contract essentially. So the reason they're asking for this is to maintain the building, but I don't see any language that ensures that they do that.
I think I'm going to ask them too, if they want to address any of the comments that I've already put in the memo that the boards already received. I'd obviously need that relatively quickly, but if they wanted to address any of those things. So.
There were, when I read through the minutes, and then, I mean, when I read through his submission, there were a lot of things I asked for clarification on in terms of the functions and how they were going to operate, level of, you know, participation that they would have there, you know, and then they started talking about the parking, that they could have up to 50 guests. And I'm looking and thinking, parking, you get an average of two, maybe two and a half people per car, and is it going to be adequate parking spaces? Those are a couple of things. And then if they're having functions, I asked whether or not they were still going to have the B and B aspect of this that was not affiliated with any other type of use. So in terms of overlapping of use of the facilities, those are questions I asked specifically during that session, and I did not see that level of response in the contract. So that I think is.
The definition of in does allow for functions as well.
Oh, I understand that. But what I'm saying is if they're looking at a function there, and they're going to have 50 people, but they've got, I forgot how many rooms they have to rent.
Eight, eight rooms, yeah.
And if they've got eight rooms they're renting, and they've got a function going on, you've got parking for the rental of the units if they're autonomous from the function. And then you have vehicles there for the function. What I'm looking at is not having a significant overlap where you don't have adequate parking. That's going to be tight enough as it is to make the parking really work. And I understand they put in a parking attendant, you know, which is great, but I think needing to understand that a little better detail, because when I reviewed the plan, I was not very convinced that the layout worked. And I raised that question to Chris when he was here. And I know he was going to comment or had commented on that. So those would be my concerns, but I'll write the rest of my comments down, and I'll get those to you sooner than later. So that, I so desire to send those off to the applicant. But those are my concerns. I don't feel like the questions I had, which were relevant to what the abutters had major issues with, I don't think is answered in the language.
I know I had conversations with the applicant after the fact of, you know, do you want to submit your business plan or sort of events, how many events you're thinking of having, those types of things. I'm not sure if that was going to be part of their presentation, but it would help if it was in the contract zone. I know there's a lot of, well, I'm going to do this, and I'm going to do this, and, you know, that's great, you're going to do this, but it's the next owner that may own this that needs to also do that. And if it's in writing, that makes it a lot easier to enforce.
And I think that was a key point raised by this board. It's, those are the land. You leave, it's somebody else's going to follow the rules.
Richard?
Yeah, I, to follow up on what Chris and Bob both said, that I, I thought they were a little light on details of addressing what the neighbors said and what we were looking for. It, they talked about it, but they didn't really make me feel like they'd put things on the plan or in their, their submission that made me feel like they were really solving the problems. I thought it was late. So I agree with both of them said.
All right. Sorry.
I, I know that probably not all these details go into the contract zones, I'm going to ask. I know that there's like fire suppression and sprinklers and stuff like that required for ins and stuff. And I don't recall the mention in that. Is that something that gets dealt with at the site plan level, or is it something that goes into the contract zone language?
They are aware that they'll need fire marshal review of their application, but that would happen further down the line than, not right now.
That's all building code related. The only thing for fire that we deal with is making sure that the fire department has access to the building.
Okay. Yeah, I wanted to ask. But I, I agree with, everything has been said as far as response. It, you know, they, they pulled back a little bit on the hours and, you know, addressed the parking attendant thing, but I didn't really see anything beyond that that was a substantial change from the earlier submission. So I'm not sure if that really does much to address the complaints of the noise and, you know, my concern about the safety of the, having people near that riverbank. So those are the two things I was not seeing in there.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd like to support this idea of getting a business plan. That, that puts a framework on what they're trying to do and would endure, and then we can figure out how to get that into what we're approving or not. But it would make a lot of sense. So they diggle here, and they do a little parking, and they change, and that we're still missing, missing a lot of their, their vision and really what they're doing, other than to try to have some activities and make some money to, to protect the building, which is good. But I think having a business plan is a very sound request.
All right. Since we're not talking about this meeting.
We're not supposed to be talking about the agenda. I just wanted to raise some points that if they're coming back, it would behoove them to be able to answer some of these things.
We're just trying to get the prepared.
The business plan was not, I don't think, remembering that being specifically requested when we were talking about at the last time. So to throw that on, it could be more of a recommendation, but it's not a mandated unless when we have the next hearing, it comes out about that. Oh, I agree 100%. Yeah, but so.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the minutes from the meeting of August 28, 2023.
Moving on to the minutes from the meeting of August 28th, 2023.
Minutes also on Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
I'll leave you to your minutes. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Bill.
Are there any comments or corrections to the minutes?
I found one itsy-bitsy typo.
Go ahead.
On page 14, under the workshop section five, set standards for small cell phone towers, just take the N out of that word. That's the only thing I found wrong. Great job, Jim.
Number five at the bottom. Towers, not towners. Okay. Any other corrections to be made to the minutes? Richard is reviewing, it's okay?
Just a clarification.
Yeah.
When you, just don't go anywhere, right there.
Okay.
D workshop, all the points listed, the people who brought them up except for number four and that, I brought that up. So to be consistent with the rest of the, that, you could put my name next to number four.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes for August 28th, 2023 as corrected.
Motion has.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Stating.
Any opposed?
I wasn't here.
None, one abstention. Four approved, none opposed, one abstained. Bob Medkaff, okay. He was not at the meeting. Any questions?
Was not present. I don't know where he was, but he wasn't present. That's where he was.
Yes. Other business, there's the Jensen Baird seminar this Thursday. I'm attending, anybody else going?
I forgot all about it.
Janice is going.
Janice is going to the seminar.
Yeah. I was going to send an email out for those on my boards that are attending tomorrow to see if anybody you, any, there's like five, I think, of you, if any of you wanted to carpool. There's also the training during the day on Thursday that was held last Wednesday night. If you were unable to attend the Wednesday night session, there's a session Thursday, I believe it's at nine in this room.
Yes. That's the, what's that one about again? That's the, is it the?
How to act as a board member training.
Nine AM, yes. Nine to 10:30. I will be there as well, because.
I will also be at that one because I didn't go to the one last week.
I was not able to make the one.
Yeah.
It was an open house.
If I was able to make the last one, I will be able to make the next one. Me either.
Okay. You didn't have to sign up for it, it's just.
I know.
If you can make it, you can make it. I had to move all the chairs back from the one they had last week, so.
Just the way I look at it, I've been doing this so long, if I don't know how to do it now. It could be new rules, you've got to keep up to speed.
I do have the findings of fact from the previous meeting for signature and plans over there for signature as well.
Okay.
Is that something I?
You were not here?
Oh, good, then I can like that. I like that. Is I here?
Any other business, board members have anything? Brittany, anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn and.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.